Ward one.
Ward one.
Got it.
And this is what, the Mother Christie? No. Okay. So, we're all here at Ward one, reporting on Town Meeting Day for Burlington.
We're with the Community News Service at UVM, working with Town Meeting TV.
We're excited to see what people vote like today.
And what do you, why are you, like, talking about CNS, why do you do that?
I do CNS because I want to get experience in reporting and trying out a new writing style, and just getting the news out there to people.
We're out here to support local journalism and see what students could do to help out Town Meeting Day.
Great.
What do you got?
Hi, so, we were just wondering, you know, why you're out here for Town Meeting Day? And what you want to say to the news people?
I'm not here because I'm on the ballot, top of the ballot, Rob Gutman, for City Council for Ward one. And this could be a great day, I'm looking forward to seeing the results later on.
Are there any articles that you're passionate about on the ballot?
Ah, yeah, well, the articles on the ballot, the questions, or that I'm passionate about? No, I think all of the article, questions relating to the financial finances of the city are appropriate. I voted for all of those, so, nothing I'm terribly passionate about, I think they're all smart things and smart moves. And I would encourage people to support them.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
What are your plans for Burlington?
Oh, my plans for Burlington is to serve for two years, at least, on the council. And to see if we can move things forward in a positive and constructive manner. And, yeah, I think first and foremost is probably getting public safety sorted out. I think that's what's on top of people's mind at most, and then move on from there.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
What brings you out here today?
Hi, I'm Zaraya, I'm one of the City Council candidates for Ward one.
Alright, congratulations, are you feeling good about the election?
Um, yeah, which doesn't, yeah, I think we're probably both feeling good.
What makes you want to stay on the board?
Um, I think a variety of things, but I've fought really hard for, especially just cause eviction and police transformation. I'd really like to work on those two issues for another two years.
Alright, anything on the ballot that you're particularly excited about?
I mean, definitely, I mean, obviously the race, and then I think question five, and removing the antiquated sex work language from our ordinance and charter.
Any expectations for today?
Oh, I don't try to predict.
You know, good advice, that's great.
Yeah.
Alright, anything you want to tell people out there?
Go vote!
Good answer, thank you so much, any other questions? Alright, thank you so much.
With the option to vote mail-in, are you expecting a lot of people today, or?
Sure, I really not, we, we in this ward pre-processed about 450 ballots that were mailed in, plus another few that we got this morning, so I don't know, I really don't know. This, this one's a toss-up, the March election usually doesn't have the turnout that the national elections do. It's hard to know.
Is there anything on the ballot that you feel strongly for?
Anything that gets on a ballot, one should feel strongly for.
What are some of the items on the ballot?
Oh, what are some of the items on the ballot?
The, there, of course, there's the school budget, which is always the first item. There are some charter, there is a charter change, and there's some language changes from, from some of the rules, yeah.
How do you keep yourself rested during this long day?
I don't. It's, uh, it's, it's like, always on alert.
Yeah.
You, you never quite know what's, it's, it's never the same. There's always something different that happens, and even after 25 years, it's still a new experience.
Well, thank you so much for your time, yeah.
Thank you for your interest.
So you have to report on more stuff later?
Um, just other boards.
Oh, gosh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm going to.
Where are you going?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm with Town Meeting TV, reporting about the polls, you mind if I ask you a couple of questions while you're out here? Or at least you want to tell me about what today is, what is Town Meeting Day?
I'm sorry.
No, hey, no worries.
I'm with Town Meeting TV and Community News Service, and we're wondering if we could ask you some questions about the election today?
Yeah, but let me get it over with.
Yeah, sounds good, I think I just wore the wrong boots, these are not very insulative.
Or it's just like, really cold.
Yeah, that too. My feet never stay warm, like, ever, even with good socks. You need a news service, and we're just asking people questions at the polls today, would you mind getting on camera for us?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Meeting TV, and we're asking people questions at the polls, would you mind getting on camera for us? Amazing, so what brings you out to the polls today, since we have mail-in ballots available?
I just like going to the polls, it's a tradition that I enjoy.
Um, is there anything you're passionate about that's on the ballot today?
Yeah, I'm supporting Rob Gutman, I, I feel like, um, the type of divisive politics that, that is on the national level is, is, uh, a problem here in Burlington, and so I'm supporting Rob Gutman, because I see him as a, as someone who is a consensus builder, and, and looking to make things, uh, happen.
Wonderful, um, do you have any other questions that we should ask?
Why do you think it's important to, you know, come out here on Town Meeting Day?
Well, it's always important to, uh, cast a ballot, um, I, I think you can't complain if you don't vote. And, uh, this year in particular, Ward one, I think, is one of the competitive races, and so, uh, it's important that, um, people from Ward one show up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, yeah. Alright, so, why are you here in person instead of doing a mail-in ballot?
Just because I live around the corner, and I'd rather come and support the election workers who are here.
Wonderful.
And so I want to keep this going as long as we can.
Is there?
I appreciate the absentee ballot, too, and I think we need to do both.
Is there anything you're really passionate about that is on the ballot today?
Rob Gutman, I'm, I'm just an ardent supporter, as the other man said, and I think he said it very nicely, so I don't have anything further to add.
You sure you don't want to add any thoughts that you have on Rob Gutman?
No, I just think we need, uh, somebody with some common sense, um, on the council, who, uh, we seem to be spending so much time on international things, which don't concern Burlington specifically, which are very important and need to be addressed, but not when we have other issues in the council. And I'm also very concerned about this civility at the council meetings, that people can't seem to control themselves, so... I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bonifaz, and, uh, I was just wondering, uh, who are you voting today?
I don't live in Burlington, so unfortunately, I'm not voting here. I live outside of the city.
Okay, and, uh, why are so many issues about Town Meeting Day?
Every issue that is voted on on Town Meeting Day is super important. Uh, it's, this is your chance, as a voter, to voice your opinion. This is the only opportunity you're gonna get, if you don't come out today and vote, the opinion you have after today doesn't matter.
Good. What do you think about the new school budget?
School budget? I have my personal opinion on the school budget, and unfortunately, I don't live in the city, and I really shouldn't voice my personal opinion on the school budget, how's that sound?
Um, I can still hear it.
You can still hear my opinion?
Yeah.
I think people should look at the, the school budget very closely, when they vote on it. Um, and scrutinize the school budget very closely.
Cool, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, uh, my name is Bonifaz, and I'm just gonna ask you a couple of questions about Town Meeting Day. What's your opinion about Town Meeting Day?
Town Meeting Day is, uh, very important, because this is when, uh, people's decisions are made, and this is also a community, you know, event, where people come together, see each other, and also have their voices heard and respected. It's, it's an amazing day.
Cool. What do you think about the new school budget?
Yeah, the school budget, I feel like, you know, we have to support our schools, we have to support our students, and investing in our children doesn't have a price, you know? I hope that the voters will vote in support of it today.
Got it, thank you so much.
Oh, my pleasure.
Well, my question is, why should people be voting for Tim Ali?
Yes, uh, because Tim Ali has been doing a great job, Tim Ali represents the new Americans. Tim Ali is an active member of this society, Tim Ali has done so well for the community, and I hope that people will reelect him today.
Hear that, Tim Ali?
Welcome, Tim Ali!
Alright, thanks a lot, man. Appreciate it. Oh, hi, my name is Olivia, what's your name?
Uh, John.
Hi, John, uh, my first question is, what's your thought on the tax increasing?
Pardon, could you ask that again?
What's your thoughts on tax increasing?
What is mine?
Yeah, your tax.
On the?
Tax increasing.
The, what is, what about the tax increase?
Yeah. Yeah, like your tax.
My tax?
Yeah, like, what are you thinking?
My thoughts, what I think as far as the tax increase?
Yeah.
That's proposed on the ballot?
Yeah.
Today?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with it, I think that, uh, some of the improvements that, that's proposed, the tax increase, I think will, um, benefit the city.
Um, my other question is, for you, what, what is the importance of voting?
Uh, I think it's very important, uh, voting, because, you know, uh, it, it doesn't seem like when one person votes that it means very much, but, you know, when you put all of those votes together, they make a big deal, and sometimes elections come down to just very few votes deciding, you know, Bernie Sanders, when he was first elected to, as mayor, um, was only elected by very few votes. Um, so, uh, I think it's important to have your voice heard, and that's one of the main ways I can do it.
Alright, so then, my last question is, what do you think about the new school budget?
Again, I think, I used to be, now I'm a carpenter, but I used to be a teacher, I used to teach middle school. And, um, I find that education is one of the best things we can do with our, with our money.
Alright, yeah, thank you, man, that's very nice.
Yeah, y'all have a good day, stay warm.
I'm just an assistant election official, I'm not, I'm not an elected electorate.
Do you mind saying that for the record to us real quick? Do you want to get the microphone?
Yeah, yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready.
Alright.
Alright, so what was that again?
Uh, I am just an assistant election official, I'm not, I'm just a schlub, I'm not an elected, electus, election official.
Got you. Could you give your opinion on, uh, on the new, uh, tax rate?
I, no, on any political thing today, when I'm working the poll, I can't tell you squat about my political positions on anything, on any candidate or on any issue. Now, after the polls close, I could tell you anything, but now, when I'm working, I have to have some semblance of neutrality? So I can't tell you diddly.
So, Town Meeting Day is such like a Vermont-specific day?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Like, what does that kind of mean?
Well, the way it is, this I can tell you, this is more civics, so, most of the towns are smaller than Burlington, um, but the bigger towns like Burlington and Rutland, it's a, they'll have an, it's an election, and we have, they call it the Australian ballot, but most towns actually have a meeting, and it's like at the high school auditorium, or, you know, or the Grange, or whatever, wherever they can meet. And they don't vote by secret ballot, they decide policy by raising their hands. Now, there is a classic Norman Rockwell painting about it, so look, look it up, when you guys get, you know, find the internet, look up Norman Rockwell Town Meeting or something, and you'll see this, um, painting of a man standing, you know, at his chair, like, oh, and he has like workman's clothes on and stuff, and it's quintessential, classic Vermont Town Meeting Day. So, if you want to check that out, you're gonna have to go to a small town, you know, like, um, um, you know, I don't know, Huntington or someplace, you know, a small town that does not have, um, the Australian ballot for their election, and the way that they, they, they meet in the meeting, and they, and every town has to do it the same day, and that way, nobody, like, if you happen to own property in two different towns, you can't vote twice, because it's all, it's all in the same thing, you're right, and you guys can't block, um, you can't block anybody from being able to come and vote, I just want to make sure that you guys know that, and you gotta be behind the sign.
Got you, thank you, sir.
Alright.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, sorry that, you know?
Yeah, no problem, man, thank you.
If you're putting together a thing, find this on the internet, Norman Rockwell painting, uh, um, I, I can't remember what it's called, the title, it hasn't, there's a title to it, I don't remember, but, um, that is, that's not New Hampshire, that's not Maine, that's not Massachusetts, that's Vermont, Town Meeting Day, and that, it's a classic, so just let, let you know, and, yeah, anyway, so find that and blend that in.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Alright, later.
Perfect, let's see.
Do an interview for our poll.
No, no, that's okay.
Go, do it, you're so good.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
How you doing, man?
Good.
Interview who, me?
Yes, please, could we?
What do you want to interview me for?
Uh, Town Meeting TV, just a quick interview about Town Meeting Day.
Hi, my name is Deluxe, what's your name?
Odell Walker.
Ah, Odell Walker, right?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Uh, what are your thoughts on taxes? Taxes?
On taxes?
Yeah.
Well, my friend, I think taxes are too damn high, and I, I, I think because of COVID, that the, uh, city and the state is trying to make up extra money off the taxpayers of Burlington, coming up with these, excuse my language, bullshit rules, and bullshit taxation and stuff like that, that's what I think of taxes, because I think that, but we are the highest taxed people, uh, uh, in Burlington, and I live right down the north end, when I bought my house, I was paying about five, six thousand dollars taxes, close to nine thousand dollars now.
Oh, also, I heard about the school budget, what do you think about?
Oh, don't even mention the school budget to me, okay? Because like I say, the, the school budget has went from five years ago to like sixty-something million, I don't know what the budget is now, but I did vote no, uh, they want to build a new high school. Guys, the thing about the high school, they say the high school, uh, the ground is, um, poisoned or contaminated, so I got a question to ask you, if, if the high school grounds are contaminated, then why is North Beach not contaminated? Because the water does run downhill, that's all I'm saying to you.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you, man.
Yeah, take care.
Have a good day.
Have a good one, thank you for talking.
What's up, man, Town Meeting TV?
These are a whole bunch of, like, getting exit.
Hey, man, my name is Uya Wari, uh, my name is Olivia, what's your name?
I'm Liam.
Hi, what's up, Liam, uh, my first question is, what do you think about the tax increasing?
Um, I don't know much about the tax increases, I'm, uh, just out here collecting, like, petition signatures for direct democracy in Burlington, which I feel is pretty important.
Oh, nice, nice, uh, for you, what, yeah, what?
Want to talk a little bit more about Prop Zero and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, absolutely, so Proposition Zero is a charter change petition, uh, for the city of Burlington, and basically what it allows everyone to do is, um, collect petitions that become referendums for the city. So, um, within, like, face-to-face relationships in the neighborhoods, if you collect 2,000 signatures, it goes to the next, like, election referendum, and with 50% or more of the people in the city voting on it, it becomes an ordinance without the city council or the mayor be able to veto it, which has been a real problem in the past, especially with the, um, uh, the, you got the car backing up right behind you?
We down, we kill? Do my issue. Yes.
But like, police accountability, huge thing, got really far, a lot of popular energy and master support got vetoed by the mayor, and we're asking, well, that's not just the, that's, that, there's, there's a systemic problem going on there, which is that, really, the, the, the people in the city, the people in the neighborhoods shouldn't have to, you know, be at the mercy of someone who's in office for a couple of years, we, we should really be able to, to have a more direct say in the laws that govern our lives, and, and this exists elsewhere in Vermont, but not in Burlington. In fact, it's just the exact same mechanism, uh, right across the river in Winuski, uh, so we took the same exact language and just appropriated it for Burlington. There's just a way to get everyone more, more involved in, or bringing politics home to people's daily lives, as opposed to something that someone else does in City Hall, when everyone, uh, everyone, everyone needs to have a voice, everyone's voice needs to have power to it.
Yes, since you're talking about voice, my last question is, yeah, what do you think is important about voting, in general?
What I think is important about voting in general? Dang, that's a good question. Yeah, I didn't know it was gonna be a quiz.
Yeah, take your time.
I feel like it's important to, like, feel like you're doing something, doing something with, with your friends and neighbors and stuff.
And your voice can be heard, too, yeah?
Yeah, exactly.
Also, what do you think about the new school budget?
Um, well, is it going up or going down?
Up.
That's cool, education's great, what's, what's to hate about that?
Alright, man, thank you, that was, that's all.
Yeah, man. Thanks so much. Good to see you, too, it's nice, is that, I, I just moved to Burlington in like 2019, 2020, so like, thought, where's the high school now? Because that was, isn't it amazing? Y'all got the escalator?
I know, right?
Wait, there's an escalator in your, y'all were bad mouthing it. What are you on about? You have an escalator in your school?
Yeah, man, you're lucky, it's bad, it doesn't work like anything.
What?
I guess I made that into a department store.
No windows and escalator break every, every day.
That sucks, alright.
It's horrible.
Yeah, that's, that's not fun.
Pretty cool, though.
Yeah, thanks, what's everyone's name?
Olivia.
Deluxe.
Jermaine.
Bonifaz.
And you, Liam.
I'm Liam, yeah.
Liam's the man.
And there's also a coffee here, if you want some, Bill's great.
Hey, man, my name is Olivia, what's your name?
My name's Joe McGee, Joe McGee.
Joe McGee.
Nice to meet you, man. I'm running for City Council here in Ward three.
Uh, so my first question is just, uh, what do you think about the tax increasing?
You know, I think it's, uh, important for us to keep our city services, um, strong, and make sure that we're not having to make any painful cuts to our city departments. Um, I know a lot of people saw an increase to their taxes, and that it's hard right now, and, um, you know, I've been happy to work on, um, a process to start looking at the property tax system, and if we need to make changes to that, um, and so, you know, I know it's a challenge for folks right now, but, um, this is an important step for us to take, uh, to make sure that our city services are, are running properly.
Well, and also since you're running, right, uh, what is something you're trying to, like, change, like, uh, that you think we should change in our community?
Sure, I think we need to, um, make a lot more, uh, changes to make housing more affordable here in the city. I think we need more housing, and we need more, um, support systems for folks. I think we need to make more investments in mental health care, and, um, uh, treatment for substance use disorder, and really, uh, address the overdose crisis, um, I think that's a big, a big thing that we have to do.
Uh, also, what do you think of, uh, the new school budget?
The new school budget? I'm very supportive of it, I think, um, you know, everyone's done a, a good job to, to, um, uh, make sure that we're supporting teachers, and, uh, and I think this budget does that, and, um, you know, I think people will hopefully see their taxes go down as a result of some, uh, changes to the funding on the state level as well.
And my last question is, for, like, on your own, what is important about voting?
Well, it's important to get out there and, um, vote for the folks who are making decisions about, uh, about our community, and it's important for folks to make a decision to run for office, and serve on boards and commissions, and join our NPA steering committees, because, you know, that's how we, we shape the future of our communities and Burlington as a whole.
Alright, thank you, man.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir, sir, thank you.
Y'all gonna be back in the studio later?
Yeah, I'll be back. Yeah, they're just high schoolers, and they're just trying to...
And I like the idea of, uh, helping the schools.
Hi, oh, my name is Deluxe.
Yeah? Oh, uh, can I skip the name?
Okay, okay, uh, about the school budget, what do you think of that?
I think it's good, vote for the school budget, more, more money for schools, very important.
Okay, and?
They have the, the city of Burlington is going to become a tech hub.
Yeah.
And it needs a lot of education for, for the students.
Also, uh, the tax is changing, what do you think of, about that, too?
The sex workers?
Yeah.
I think that that's good, uh, vote for them, you know, I think that, that bullshit, that, the way it's been.
Thank you, man.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Awesome, hello, I'm Travis Washington, I'm here with?
Lenora Travis.
Lenora Travis, awesome.
Travis Travis.
Awesome, um, so, what, so you're running for city council seat, right?
Yes.
What are some key issues that, um, really stick out to you, especially for this election?
Some key issues that have been sticking out to me are, um, first of all, affordable housing, and, uh, more places for homeless, uh, there's so many people out there that are displaced, and there's just not enough places for them, uh, you know, when they have to, when they get a bed, fortunate enough to get one, they have to be out at seven, seven-thirty in the morning, and then where do they go? We only have two warming shelters, and they, because of the COVID pandemic, can only take in 18 people. So, if you have, say, 20, 25 people there, you can only take in 18, where does everybody else go? You know, so I have been communicating with, um, Reverend Carrie of the Red Door Church, and her and I have been talking about looking for buildings and spaces where we can put more people, and, uh, you know, basically, where they can also have a little bit more solitude, where they can sit and, you know, make their phone calls, and I go to the BFW Day Shelter, I'm a member of the Post 782, so I go there and I try to help make phone calls, and just try to, you know, locate people somewhere.
Awesome, um, and, so, what would you like to see, like, if you're elected councillor, what would you like to see Burlington voters, like, voting on, and like, what would you like to see, like, um, progress?
I would like to see a lot of people vote for affordable housing, which is, you know, a hard thing here right now, it's hard to find housing, and especially based on certain incomes right now, um, I'd like to see people just, um, you know, work together, you know, all city council people, and all, you know, people in the house, to just come together and try and talk things through, and work together, because even though we're running for an office, if you don't get the seat, that doesn't mean you still can't get out here and do something productive, and work with the ones that are sitting on the city council. So I think it would be good for all of us to try and just band together.
Um, and, uh, well, there's like multiple construction projects, too, that are being made throughout Burlington, what are your kind of thoughts on those, and like, what, like, because there's?
Construction in particular, which one are you?
Like, there's the Champlain Parkway, along with like other, like, um, more affordable housing, or just like apartment buildings be resurrected?
I'm not familiar with the Champlain, well, you said it's a parkway?
Yeah, the parkway.
I'm, I'm not too familiar with too much information on that, uh, there's, are some things that I will have to look into, as I said, I was the last-minute person to jump in, you know, but, um, I do believe in, like, the memorial, you know, restoring the memorial, the Auditorial Memorial for the Veterans on Main Street. I am looking forward to something good happening, where the mall was taken down on the center of Church Street, which is an eyesore right now, so I'm looking for something positive to be done there. I know there's a lot of infrastructure being done right now, uh, especially on Shelburne, and, uh, but it is a good thing, I mean, I know a lot of people complain about it, "Oh, you know, they're in my yard, they're doing this, they're doing that", but you know, infrastructure is very important, if you can't take care of your town, and your roads and everything, you know, it's just gonna be a disaster in the long run, so...
Thank you so much for speaking with me, I appreciate it so much. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Alright, hi, I'm Jermaine, nice, nice to meet you, what's your name?
Ben Travers.
Ben Travers, nice to meet you, um, so you're running, right?
Yes, running for city council here in Ward five.
Okay, so, uh, well, can I get, like, why you're running, what, and what you're running for?
Yeah, uh, I'm someone who's always been involved with the community, uh, I serve on our Neighborhood Planning Assembly Steering Committee, I'm the chair of our Parks Commission, uh, when I was a renter here in the neighborhood, I served on the Housing Board of Review, um, always someone who's, uh, found a part of my life to get back to the community, and, um, see an opportunity here to step up for the community and run it for city council.
Okay, sweet, 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 what, what would you say, like, should be, like, the main thing for people who are trying to vote for you? Like, why would somebody want to vote for you?
Yeah, I, I think we have three great candidates in this race, uh, me, myself, uh, I think that folks in the community are ready for the city council to, uh, recommit itself to local issues, to step away from some of the, uh, political divisiveness and political rhetoric, and that's my plan, uh, I want to work with others, regardless of whatever political background Uh, I want to work with others regardless of whatever political background you come from. Um, I'm not entering this race with any sort of political bias or agenda. My commitment is to uh work with everyone, respect all points of view and and try to make progress on uh really important issues like sustainable infrastructure and affordability and and housing uh and a high school for the city.
High school? Oh, yeah, speaking of high school, um, well, if you win, I was gonna, I'm wondering like how would that affect the the budget for the high school since it's like been raising lately?
Yeah, uh, when I've been out there talking to voters, um, high school, uh, the high school is is one of the main issues that I've heard from folks. Uh, and look, we need a new high school. Uh, it's gonna cost a whole lot of money uh to build it. Um, and we need to find a path forward. Uh, you know, obviously, the city has its own needs with uh roads and sidewalks and parks, and we need to make sure that the school district and the city are not are not competing against one each other for those funds. I think we need to find a path forward uh for infrastructure for the city and then we also have to find a path forward for the high school.
Okay, sweet. Well, thanks for your time.
Yeah, thanks so much for being here.
Yeah, no problem. Alright, good luck.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, guys.
Alright. Yeah, get the signs, get the signs up in there. Good, how are you? I'm good. Uh, just a little interview here, okay? So my name is Olivier. What's your name?
Farid.
Uh, wait, already you're running. Wait, can you just tell us a little bit about what you're running for?
Uh, well, I am a candidate for a city council, but I am actually a volunteer for a ballot uh measure campaign that we are trying to bring to uh for the next election in November.
So you're running for uh city council?
City council. I'm using kinda like the city council race uh as a my uh way to raise awareness and to bring attention to the two issues that uh I have volunteered to uh to be a spokesperson of.
Alright, so my question I ask is what motivates you to like to run for city council? Is there anything personal?
Well, uh, I really uh care about the issues that I'm collecting petition signatures for. Uh, the for uh the one, one of them is the community control of the police.
Yeah.
Uh, because I I think like the the police in Burlington have been out of control. Uh, and uh they they need to be reined in because um it's supposed to be uh community-based policing, not like a police-based community. Uh, so that really is important to me and uh the second issue I'm running for is uh for direct democracy. I think we need to have more say uh and to participate in all the decisions being made that impact our lives. I think people have the right to participate in all those decisions. If we're gonna be impacted by it, then they need to include us. And uh, you know, most city governments are not that great at uh doing that. They just have their own agenda and they'll tell us if we're lucky. So uh, we want more involvement, we want more participation, and we want more power for the regular voters, not just for politicians.
Uh, also, what do you think about tax increasing?
The tax increasing? So that's one of the things that uh actually on principle, I uh I said no because uh it's a process that is not accessible to us. Uh, I don't know where they come up with these numbers. Um, uh, I know other municipalities, they've uh, you know, enacted something called participatory budgeting where the community actually like gets a say on where certain uh uh money is allocated. So there's no reason Burlington can't do that. I mean Burlington used to be the leader in like all kinds of like progressive policies. Uh, we need to engage, re-engage people again and make that budget participatory before I can actually support it.
Alright, so and also my last question, I'm just gonna ask for school. What do you think about the school budget like?
It's the same. I I think it's the same thing. Uh, I do think uh, you know, like it's like the pandemic has been hard for everybody. Um, and I don't have kids, so uh it, you know, like I, you know, I I end up like, you know, I I don't mind like supporting education. I think it's important. Um, so but I I do think, you know, they need, we need to like know more about like the process and what's being, what are we paying for, so.
So there gotta be more like, uh, yeah, to let people know the process of it.
I don't know. I just feel like, you know, we pay more and more in taxes and the kids get stupider and stupider. Maybe I'm not, maybe it's not real, but like that's how it feels like.
Alright, thank you, man.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, where's your name? Olivier, what's your name?
Hi, I'm Lucia Campriello and I'm running for Ward Five School Board Commissioner.
Alright, so since you're running for that, right? Uh, what is something that you like uh you're trying to progress that you think they're not doing right right now?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So less about what they're not doing right and more about what I'm passionate about, um, which is to advocate for equity in our public school system. I'm also really energized about the new Burlington High School project. Um, and so look forward to joining the team to help bring that project to fruition.
Yeah, since you said, uh, what do you think about the the new rule that taxes increasing, yeah?
Yeah, so I mean Burlington, we've got to figure out how to uh make sure that we are able to provide as a city all of the services that we need to provide and support our students in exactly the ways they need to be supported. So to do that, we've got to make sure that Burlington is affordable while also um financing what I think is the cornerstone of a healthy community, and that's education.
So what do you think about the new school budget?
Yep, so I I'm supporting the school budget. Um, I think especially given all that our schools are being asked to do right now to support students. In addition to providing high-quality education, it's really important that we provide the finances um to support them. And I'm also really interested in learning a lot more about um our new equitable budgeting process um that's rolling out for the first time um in the district. And and the goal of that is really to resource, for schools to resource um programs in exactly the ways they um see ser- see students needing the services.
Well, since you're one of the candidates, my other question was for the voters, why is it important and what do you think is important for voters to vote?
Oh, it's so important to vote. Um, I mean, it's about participation, it's about having your voice count. Um, it's an opportunity to express what's important to you. It's an opportunity to express what you value. Um, I think the more, the more participation, the better.
Alright, thank you. Now you can ask any question.
Yeah, well, I'm it. This is just such a treat to um be able to meet students um in our school district. And so um I'm ex- I would love to hear what's on your mind, especially when you think about the the new high school. Um, but really, what else is on your mind when you think about Burlington School District?
Uh, on my mind, I think it's good, but I think we need new schools though. Macy's uh uh it just doesn't feel like we're actually not actually school.
Yep.
Yeah.
What do you hope for most in the new school?
Uh, that we can have, we can have actually school like the one we had before, windows and everything. So like somewhere like you actually feel like you're in school.
Nice.
Yeah.
Have you um had a chance to participate in any of the open meeting, open conversations that um are happening right now to source ideas for the new school building?
Actually, no, and I actually feel like they should try to make to to try to bring like, yeah, student, to give idea from student too, but actually I haven't gained.
Yeah, well, I would love to exchange email addresses and I'll make sure that you know when the next um upcoming sessions are. Cause I think one of the most important pieces is to be sure that students and teachers are contributing to the to the process, which there have been some opportunities so far, but really ongoing and throughout. Um, it's gonna be so important to hear from students and teachers.
That would be great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. You guys rock. Thank you, honey.
Yeah, thank you.
But seriously, how do I get your email address?
Uh, email.
We are at the Fletcher Free Library for Ward Eight uh for the Town Meeting Day in Burlington. Uh, here we have candidates Ally and Hannah posted outside and we're curious to see how voting goes.
Good day.
How cold are we?
Really cold.
Freezing.
Warm, really cold. Oh, yep, sorry. Forget I'm connected. Yeah. Awesome. So what brings you out here today?
Yeah, um, so I'm, my name's Ally. I'm a student here. I'm also a social worker in the community. Sorry, am I supposed to look somewhere? Okay, yeah, okay, dope. Uh, yeah, and um, you know, like we're out here fighting for like climate justice, housing justice, like mental health, public safety, racial justice, all that stuff. Um, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
So what got you into running for city council?
Yeah, um, so I I'd been down to testify. Oh, there goes my pin. Um, I've been down um to testify at city council about a a couple of issues sort of in my social work capacity. Um, and yeah, I kinda just got involved, involved that way.
Wonderful. Uh, besides, you know, you running, are there any other issues on the ballot that you're really passionate about?
Question five, um, which removes um like stigmatizing language um around sex work from our our city laws. I think that's important.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Uh, I'm collecting petition signatures for two charter changes. One is gonna expand direct democracy in Burlington by expanding the right of petition to include changes to the city code of ordinance. And the other is in support of creating an independent board that could investigate and discipline police officers accused misconduct.
Alright, that's awesome. And uh, why do you think it's important for people to come out here and vote?
It it is your civic duty. It is the way you participate in politics and do your thing. And with Proposition Zero, we're looking to expand that to make it even easier to participate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Cool. What brings you out today?
Well, I um, I want to make sure that as many people vote as possible. I want to make sure that people are like informed about what they're voting on and more importantly, or most importantly, make um inform them that there is an election today.
Um, is there anything important you'd like to inform us about?
Um, just knowing that local politics is really important, that like what happens here and who wins this race and the other local races like will dictate things like housing policy in Burlington. Will dictate things like parking policy, will determine um how our parks look and parks and recreation and and many other important issues, and these are issues that affect all of us.
Given there's the option to vote mail-in, have you been seeing a lot of turnout today?
Um, I haven't seen a ton yet. Um, hopefully that increases as the day goes on.
Thanks so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, what brings you out here today?
So, hi, everybody. My name is Saja Amagali and I am a write-in candidate for Ward Eight for the Burlington School District. Yeah.
Is there anything important you want us to know?
Yeah, like first of all, the first thing is in Burlington right now, there is no Burlington High School anymore. The school is closed and shut down, so every student in the Burlington High School has to go to the mall downtown to teach and study. And that is a big problem right now because who wants to like study in a mall? And so, yeah, like the first thing probably we're gonna do is like vote for a new budget so we can reopen the school and build it. And that's the most important thing, of course.
Thank you so much. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a school board member present. So this is Saja Amagali. So again, there's no other candidates, so it was via write-in. Okay. So we do need a representative of Ward Eight for our um for our school board. Cool. And this is Saja, if you have any questions.
Hi. Um. Saja Amagali.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rachel Foster.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm here with Maria because um, so this is my fourth visit here to talk about um number five on the ballot and concerns about decriminalizing pimping and brothel owning and sex buying in Burlington and what that means sort of for all of Vermont, for vulnerable people in Burlington. Um, and sort of the bait and switch that this was something that came about as an archaic and offensive language change, which we agree that the language is archaic. And we also support decriminalizing those bought and sold in prostitution, but holding pimps, brothel owners, and sex buyers accountable. And the message is that Burlington is open for business in the sex trade. Um, and we're really, really deeply concerned about sort of the implications um for um vulnerable populations in Burlington and what it signals to the rest of the country about sex tourism and what it means for Vermont um as sort of a test case. Because Perry Freeman and also Selena Colburn have made it very clear that they support full decriminalization of the sex trade on the state level. So rather than amending and changing the uh language in the city charter, they have decided to completely lift the prohibitions on brothels, on pimping, and on sex buying. Um, and what we support is sort of a partial decriminalization piece, which is decriminalizing those bought and sold in prostitution and offering exit services and strategies and not fully decriminalizing the sex trade, which includes decriminalizing the demand side um and the side where there's just sort of inherent harms. Um, and it's really concerning. So we've come, we've testified. Um, we're led by survivors from around the country, World Without Exploitation is a two-hundred-member organization coalition. And so many survivors have spoken out and have felt completely unheard. Um, and this exists at the nexus of racial, gender, economic injustices that cause certain people to be bought and sold in the sex trade, um primarily women and girls of color. Um, and sex buyers are typically white men with disposable income. And somehow they're gonna be given impunity, um and that's deeply concerning.
Well, thank you so much for your time and for giving us your voice. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Materials in the building, so everybody and all the students are now switching to the mall, Macy's downtown here. So they're teaching and they're studying downtown here. And it's been like this since probably twenty twenty. And nobody had really talked about it a lot and it's not getting any attention. And I think we need to like sign in and vote for a new budget to rebuild the school and open it again for the students so they can go back to normal school.
No, thank you.
Okay, you're all good. Not really. Okay. Did you vote today?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, are you planning on voting later? Huh?
I was just in the wrong words.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Can we still?
Yeah, yeah.
We can still interview you if you'd like. We're Town Meeting TV.
Oh, no.
Okay. Hey, uh, we're the Town Meeting TV and Community News Service. Would you mind if we ask you a few questions about the ballot today? Wonderful. So what brings you out here today?
Um, I'm just exercising my right to vote.
Wonderful. And are there any articles that you're passionate about?
Um, not particularly. I'm mostly concerned about city councillor um for my ward.
Wonderful. Would you like to share who you're voting for or any support?
Um, I'm gonna be voting for Ally House.
Wonderful. And why is that?
Um, I've, she came to a club meeting of mine and I met her and she was very nice and I really liked how passionate she was about the issues that she cared about. Um, and I thought someone like that would be good to represent me.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you so much.
That's what we wanna know.
Yeah.
No, what are they saying? Like, is there like a key issue that?
The city council, like between Hannah and um and Ally, um, but we haven't had a ton of people being willing to chat about what they're voting on, so, yeah. Yeah.
Well, democracy in action.
Yes. Hi, did you vote today?
Um, I'm actually a bit different.
Okay, sounds good.
It's between when we opened to nine o'clock. Can we get you on camera, Diane? Cause we're worried that we're not gonna have a lot of voters to talk to. I'm worried about not having a lot of voters. So why, why, so you're telling us that turnout is is slow today? But there there are important things on the ballot. Well, there are important things on the ballot. Now.
How's it going?
Normally I would have somebody waiting for me, you know, impatiently at at seven o'clock for an opening. Okay, because they want to do this before they go to work. Now, on the other hand, we could say that Australian ballot has been successful, okay? And because it's been successful, um, you know, we don't have people turning up. Um, but. So there were a lot of people who voted by mail? Is that what you mean or? Yes, people voted by mail or or they dropped them off at the town office. Okay, in fact, even this morning, we're having a lot of people drop things off here. They're not coming in. They're using the drop boxes you can see behind me. There were drop boxes outside, right? Oh, there are some in here. Okay. Okay, there's the ballot box, okay. The ballot box. So, I mean, that that's, life has changed in in our front cover. I'm here talking to you in a mask. Right. I'm still here talking to you in a mask. Right. So, um, so some of the learned behaviors that we've now experienced for the last two years, some of them are successful. Okay, do we, how do we describe, you know, making this facility available for people who?
for people who are still doing things by prior methods? Okay, so now it gets to be a question of what do we as the community at the state want to see? How do we want things to happen? And we need to have that conversation. So we know we can do things, but it's kind of like my, my life now is just as the piece. I, I'm doing a lot of stuff the week before today. You know, processing those mailed ballots that I wouldn't be doing normally if this was 10 years ago or 20 years ago.
Right, or even three years.
Or even three years ago. Okay, so it's really. It's whining about success. Okay, so it's thank you very much for using the mail or the drop box. But you know, I still have to anticipate people coming here to vote. Or in this case, drop, you know, a supervised drop box. So we're still there in how we have the state laws that conduct voting.
Right, right. So you have a hybrid system.
We have a hybrid system.
That needs to accommodate.
So it's, it's kind of like, we need the evaluation, how's this hybrid system working?
Yeah, yeah.
So it'd be nice to know if people are happy. I mean, obviously some people are.
Right.
And I know about a third of the population showed up already.
Okay.
In the, from my town here. Not the village, but the entire town.
Yeah, yeah. So people are participating. They're just participating in different ways.
A different way.
Okay.
So, you know, so it's kind of like I'm going, the girl scouts are coming to sell cookies at three o'clock today.
Oh, now I see.
See, this is, okay, we don't have to go back. So then I'm kind of going, wow, did they, you know, did they, you know, put that out or whatnot? It's not really my responsibility to do that, but I'm kind of going, I hope there's some. I'd hate to see those girls go to all that, that effort.
Right.
To have, you know, sit here and twill.
Or you're buying a lot of cookies.
Not that many. Okay. I still have my exercise program I still have to do.
We'll try to get the word out on Channel, on Town Meeting TV that.
Yeah.
But there'll be, the girl scouts here at 3:00 PM.
Three.
I'll put that out on our social network.
Three, 3:30, three, yes, 3:30 to six, they'll be here, dinnertime.
After school, yeah.
After school. So they'll be here.
All right, well, well, let's see if we can find some voters to talk to. I see one there, so we'll see if, thank you. That's good. I mean, it's interesting.
It's an interesting dynamic, like I said, you know, do I complain about success?
Right. Well, let's see if we can get some feedback from voters. Thank you. So, yeah. All right.
I hear some of the brands are, some of the flavors are hard to come by.
Oh, good to know. Okay. That was good. She's my friend. Okay.
Hi, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Are we filled out or?
Yeah, I'm dropping this off for my daughter.
Okay, yeah, you can actually put that right in here.
Oh, that one, can you?
I can take that for you.
Yeah, maybe you can reuse it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Do you know if it matters if she spelled his name right or wrong?
As long as, no, if it's close, they know what the intent is.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
I'm with Town Meeting TV and we're looking for some voter perspectives to share on our government access TV station in Burlington.
I'm in favor of what you're doing, but I actually am in a hurry, so I'm sorry I can't.
Thank you so much. Thanks for voting and dropping off your ballot. Do you like our stickers?
And they show up?
I know, they really do. They're really good quality, too.
They are really good quality.
How's it going?
Good. Is this just a drop box?
It is. Is that signed?
Yes, it is.
Perfect, drop it right in there.
Excuse me, I'm with Town Meeting.
Broke her leg.
Oh, gosh.
I don't even live in Essex.
Okay, well, you're a good friend. Thank you so much. Check out that. For some reason, I thought, I got, I got it mixed up.
You're always gonna come out here and have coffee, but this is.
Well, you have time. You have time.
Yeah, the hordes of people, what, march. Well, a little more snow would be better, but.
Get three to six tonight.
Nice, alright. Every little bit.
On top of what we had on Friday.
Yeah, I, except that snow on Friday, it was so light, you know, powdery that it got, we skied on Sunday at Sugar Bush. A lot of it. Oh, nice. Oh, look at you. Where'd you go?
I was at Stowe.
Stowe? I heard that Stowe. Do we have that effect on people or?
Saturday was.
Does she, oh, no, we're good. We're just chatting. My gosh. It's Town Meeting TV.
It's public access.
We are so warm and welcoming. Why not cutting edge? Is that Susan McCord? Or?
You got it all.
Well, let's see if we can at least get. What? Okay. Hi, would you be willing to share your thoughts about voting today with our viewers?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Oh, okay.
Hey, we'll take anything.
I know, really.
How's it going?
Good, how you doing?
Good. You?
Not too bad.
Good.
Good turnout.
A couple of seconds telling us about why it was important for you to vote today?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
You know, we were talking about that problem, but like.
But I think the biggest difference is people have been looking at these issues for 20 days.
Ballots for about 20 days before the election.
Yeah, I know, we've definitely run into that. That town meeting TV and trying to figure out, you know, get the forum scheduled early enough so that people have time to.
Yeah.
And actually, maybe by mail, yeah, you're voting for somebody else. Which is, uh, I don't know, we don't know how big of a problem it is, it's not ever.
Here, will you hold this for a second?
For sure. Can't say we didn't try, exactly. We can't manufacture people. Or then.
Really, we just want to know why you're here today.
Here.
I'm, I miss having the town meeting.
You missed the town meeting. Did you participate in the information meeting last night online?
No, no, no.
So that doesn't, that doesn't substitute for you.
No, that's, no, no. And I know they're working on alternatives to the mass meeting, but I, I, that was missing.
Yeah.
Plus, the Essex reporter wasn't out there, you know, so, you know. Didn't feel like I was getting all the best information I needed. That was my concern there.
Okay.
But I like, yeah, the whole idea of the town meeting, I miss it, I like it.
Because being with your community and having an opportunity to, to talk about ideas and to share different perspectives.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you for sharing your perspective with us. Ballots versus, you know, the town meeting, typical town meeting gathering.
Yeah, I'm not.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, though, for listening.
I have like a ton of errands to run.
Oh, good. And it's day, I'm with Town Meeting TV.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure. Um, so I had gotten my absentee ballot, but I was away. And then, when I came back, I didn't get it out till today, so I dropped it off.
Oh, great. And so, obviously, it was important to you to make sure that your voice was heard and that you placed your vote.
Yes.
Were you motivated by select board candidates or school board or what particular issues? Or is it just voting in general?
Yeah, so that's, that's basically it, especially in this day and age, so.
Okay.
That was it. It's the, uh, the whole principle of the thing.
Because we have a right and responsibility. It sounds like you take that seriously.
Yeah, a right and a responsibility, and it's, it's, uh, it's really, uh, quite, you know, a positive thing to be able to do this, when so many are incapable of doing the same thing. So, we shouldn't take it lightly.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate that, thank you. Have a good one.
You too.
All the, all the good stuff.
He'd rather turn that into ice cream for the.
Yeah. I like it where he started, because when I got here, I was like, oh, my legs moved and my, my feet are staying warm. At the high school, I was like walking back and forth, I'm like, oh. The, the wind is crazy over there.
Uh, well, it's usually better, it's usually worse here than high school.
Yeah, that's what I was told, and then I went over there, but we went there this morning, and the wind was just blowing over there, and then we came here, and I was like, oh, it's warm here.
It's soggy, thirty degrees feels warm.
Yeah, exactly.
I know you're a Vermonter, man.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, somebody has a kit, does he have a kit? Little kid, if we can get the kid on camera.
Tell me who you are and why you're here.
I'm Michael Malley, and I'm just here to vote because I, I made a mistake on my mail-in ballot, so I gotta fix it here.
Okay.
So, uh.
So taking advantage of your system and making your voice heard.
Yes.
But definitely wanting to, to participate in the process.
Oh, definitely, yeah, it's a very important part of our, our duties as citizens to, to vote and to make our, our wishes known to, uh, to the town, so.
Great.
So that's why I'm here.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that with us. Take care.
Look, if you look at the.
Well, we got two solid interview back momentarily, so.
Yeah, did you go to the village yet?
We did, yep, and we were also in Winuski, too, so. Excuse me, we're with Town Meeting TV, and I'm wondering if you'd be willing to, uh, talk with us about voting today? You and your little friend here, was this your first time voting?
No, it's his third time.
Wow.
I think we're good.
Yeah?
No worries.
Oh, bummer.
Well, bud.
Can I give you a sticker?
I already have one.
I have this special sticker.
How about that special one?
Is that okay?
There you go, buddy.
Thank you. Uh-oh, bad dogs. Look out, there's a donkey over there.
The donkey's gonna pick you up.
All right, I don't know.
I can't believe you didn't get the kiss. I thought he was gonna say yes.
With only one degree this morning.
Ugh, so it's balmy now.
About zero.
Yeah, that's true. And, well, it's supposed to sleep, right? Snow, sweet, something, it's doing something, but.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to, I think it's supposed to get to like thirty today.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was hoping for.
Yeah, we're supposed to get a few snow showers, but I don't think we're gonna get much.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll interfere with the voting, but most, you know, from what we've seen, very little traffic.
Right.
Most people have done, you know, voted absentee.
Yep, yep. Okay, what do you think, we're calling it. Okay. I mean. Voting and what was important to you today?
Uh, could you just make sure that you, you don't have it.
We're just, um, I mean, we're trying to talk to voters and get their perspectives on today's election and, and the changes that COVID has brought to Town Meeting Day. Um, but tell us why you're here and, um, and maybe if you have a, a message for voters, just about, you know, voting and community and.
Sure. Hi, good morning, I'm Ray Garafano, Representative Essex, Essex eight one. And I'm here to help support my friend Brian Sheldon, who's running for the one-year seat for the Select Board. And I'm here to meet my constituents, I'm a newly appointed representative, so I thought I'd get out here and meet some folks. Town Meeting has a rich tradition in Vermont, and gratefully, we, I work for state and we get the day off, so we actually get time to, um, pay attention to politics and our local, um, happenings. And, um, I want people to get out and vote. I think, uh, in Vermont, we've done an amazing job of making it really easy for people, and I think a lot of people have, uh, mailed, uh, mailed in their ballots already. As you can see, it's not very crowded here, and in years past, we've come and it's been really busy with, uh, lots of people going back and forth, so I'm grateful. We live in a state that allows for that and has made it really easy. Um, I think, uh, it was nice to have a virtual town meeting. I think a lot of people want to, you know, get back in person and, uh, you know, um, but we need to be mindful of COVID still, even though it's waning, and we're lucky that the numbers are coming down. But we had a great virtual meeting last night that was very informative, the Select Board, uh, put on a great presentation about the articles that people were voting on today. And, um, you know, community's really energized for, you know, we have a lot of opportunities with COVID coming, um, with federal money and things happening at legislature, so it's gonna be a great year.
Great, wow, thank you, that was perfect, that was worth the wait.
It was my first, my first actual real interview, so I appreciate the opportunity and practice.
Yeah, I had to practice, and, and like you said, it's an opportunity for you to introduce yourself.
Yeah, yeah, I'm new, you know, in my position, and, um, you know, entering mid-session, it was kinda like, it's been a whirlwind, so I thought.
Did you start at the legislature right, um?
Uh, I started on January eighteenth, so, late, yeah, yeah, after the session started, yeah, yeah, so I was appointed on the eleventh. And, um, you know, I think we have a lot of important work to do here in Essex, and hopefully, we'll have amazing people like Brian that will help shepherd the separation and, uh, all the stuff that will come with that, um, which will be challenging for both communities.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we definitely expected, I thought that there would be more people here because, you know, this is, this separation is very much on people's minds, and there's still a lot to be determined. Um, and then with the write-in campaign, it's just, I don't know, hopefully, there are a lot of, it looks like there are a lot of ballots that had come in.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of people have voted. I think, you know, in our communication with folks, uh, trying to get the word out, most people have already voted by mail or are dropping it off today. So, um, like I said, I think it's really nice that we have the privilege that we can do that, and, uh, Andy Watts was speaking last night about kind of the cost of the mail-in ballots, but was really saying how voter participation has increased so much because of that, and I think we need to be really paying attention to that and making it as easy for people to vote as, as possible.
Great, thank you so much.
Some blessings of COVID, right?
There you go, yeah, the silver lining.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, we've seen it on our end that there are more people that are participating in local government.
And community involvement, yeah, just meetings, school board meetings and things like that, it's really nice that people have that opportunity to do that.
Yeah, the hybrid option also is a good way, because it gives people, people who want to be in person still have the opportunity, and those that can't be in person or don't want to be in person have another.
We're doing such a great job of it at legislature, like, I have been amazed at how well they're organizing the hybrid nature of, you know, certain folks aren't able to come in, and I mean, like, our tech people are amazing to have, do the setup and kind of roll with the, you know, punches as they come along.
Yeah, everybody has had to, it's not just pivot, we're all pirouetting at this point, so.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Well, great, it was so nice to meet you. My name is Barry, and this is Emily.
Emily, nice to meet you.
And.
Thank you so much for that.
Of course, thank you for that opportunity.
In the age of COVID.
Um, I don't really have the right words to say, believe me.
Okay, thank you.
We are at the Chamberlain School in South Burlington. We are three students with the Community News Service at UVM, working with Town Meeting TV.
We're excited to see how people are voting today.
Very cold.
That's awesome. Uh, so what brings you guys out here? Are you, uh, excited for Town Meeting Day?
Absolutely, we have some great candidates this, this year on Town Meeting Day. This is Linda Bailey, she's running for city council.
So, I'm out here saying hi to everybody and just the, winding up the campaign.
Sounds good, and, uh, why is it important for people to come out here and vote today?
Well, this is how you direct your city and how, what happens in your city depending on who you vote for. There's also the school budget and the town budget to vote on, and it's important to be there, otherwise, how can you complain if you haven't even tried, been there to vote on it?
Uh, is there anything you find particularly important on the ballot today?
Vote for Linda Bailey for city council.
City council choices are exciting this year, we don't always have, even have challengers, the incumbents are often running unopposed, and this year, we have some, we have some great, um, challengers who would bring some inclusivity and welcoming tone to South Burlington, and I'm really excited about both of them, Chris Trombley and Linda Bailey.
Great, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So, why do you think it's important that people come out to the polls today?
This is what people asked for in two thousand and seven, they wanted to vote on the city and school budgets, and I think that we should make good on that promise. And we also have, I think, some big, big issues at stake here. Um, we have the vision of the South Burlington residents and what they want their city to be, and so that's why I'm out here, that's why I'm running again.
And what are some, uh, things that you're passionate about that you're running on for this upcoming ballot in this year?
Yeah, well, we still have our, our city center, uh, that has a couple more votes that we want to put before the voters, and I have been in that since the very beginning, and I would, I would love to see that through. We also have our, our new, just, you know, what we call planned unit developments, uh, which are new rules for how to develop our more developed areas through infill, as well as in our mixed-use commercial areas, and I would love to be a part of that discussion. So some, some projects that are still ongoing that I would love to see through.
Wonderful, awesome. Uh, is there anything else you would like to say to people who'll be watching the broadcast?
I just want to say that Channel seventeen is awesome. I think that as a former president and treasurer of Channel seventeen, uh, there is no better news source when you want to hear it straight from your elected officials. And so, I, I really thank Channel seventeen for showing up at the polls, you're the first people here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Big seal.
Big seal.
Big seal. Like literally shivering.
Polls, wonderful. Recording. Okay, hi, so what are you passionate about today that's on the ballot?
Oh, I just, um, just voting for the school budget and, uh, town budget and stuff mostly, but, uh, yeah.
And why do you come out in person instead of doing mail-in?
I, I've always done it traditionally, and I just feel comfortable doing it that way, I don't, you know, I don't get out much anyway, so with COVID and everything that's been going on, it's my chance to see people, so.
And what do you think about, you know, democracy in action and having people come out to the ballot today? Is there anything you'd like to say to people about that?
I think people should come out and vote and stuff like that, and I think, uh, democracy is an important thing for this country, especially with everything that's going on in the world today. Um, people ought to take it serious and stuff, and really understand what, what is of value to them, their families and everything going forward. This is a very important time in everybody's life, so.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Yep. Today. Uh, we're with Town Meeting TV, and we were wondering if you'd like to answer a couple of questions from the camera for us?
I'm running to a doctor's appointment, but I'm coming back later, so if you're still here, I'll catch you there.
How many people have we gotten so far?
So, uh, what brings you guys out here today?
To vote.
All right, uh, why do you think it's so important to come out here and vote?
Town meeting, town meeting.
All right.
Voice, to voice.
Very true. Um, anything you guys are excited about for the ballot today?
Not really, not, not especially, it's just, I want my voice heard.
All right, good answer. Um, thank you, guys.
Up my ear and somewhere.
Uh, tonight, if I'm not mistaken.
On the news?
Uh, on Channel seventeen.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, sure.
All right, uh, so what brings you out here today to vote?
Um, the school budget.
All right, and, uh, why do you think it's important to come out here and, uh, vote in person?
Well, I'm a teacher, not in this district, but I am, and, um, I know schools are struggling right now, and so here I am.
All right, and, uh, why come in person when you could do the over-the-mail ballots?
Oh, gosh, you know, I hadn't even thought about that, to tell you the truth, I think I'm just old school, I just want to come and do it.
Very cool, and, uh, anything on the budget that you're particularly interested in besides the school budget?
Um, you know, I voted yes for the city part two, because, you know, I think roads and, uh, levees are important, I guess, so, there you go.
All right, and, uh, for democracy, wha, why do you think it's so important that people are coming out here?
I think it's so important because people need to get out and make things happen, because COVID has made us all sort of stay in our homes and be sort of like, oh, I don't care, but we still need to care, and our children need us, so.
Thank you so much. Uh, what brings you out here for voting today?
I vote every time.
All right, and why do you think it's important for people to come out here and continue to vote?
Civic responsibility.
All right, anything on the ballot you're excited for today?
Not particularly.
And, um, let's see, any other questions, guys? Uh, well, why come in person when you can vote, uh, via mail?
Habit.
All right, good answers, thank you.
Good morning, has there been a big turnout today with the option to vote mail-in?
Well, uh, it's steady turnout, I wouldn't say it's a great turnout yet, but we've got a long day ahead of us, and there were a lot of, uh, people that voted early, so we processed a fair amount of those ballots.
And what's on the ballot today? What can we expect?
Well, there are budgets, certainly, there are city councilors, and also members of the school board on the ballot today.
And how do you keep yourself rested doing all this today?
How do I keep myself rested?
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure I will be. But I have my book to read, you know, if things get quiet, hopefully, things get a little busier, because it's nice to see people from the community. We're all working with our masks, so we're all saying, you know, it's hard to recognize people, obviously, when we all have our masks on, but it's nice to see everybody.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for doing this.
Hello, we're at South Burlington High School and Middle School, uh, here in South Burlington.
And we're just reporting from Community News Service and Town Meeting TV on the Town Meeting Day today.
Thank you, us too. All right, uh, so what brings you out here today?
Well, I actually am one of the candidates running for the three-year seat for the South Burlington City Council, my name is Tim Barrett, if you didn't know.
All right, nice to meet you. Um, are you feeling excited about voters today?
I am, you know, the turnout's been a little bit low, but of course, this is just a budget, city council, school director election, you know, there's not a primary, it's not a major, you know, US or senate representative, uh, you know, election right now, so. So just the dedicated voters of South Burlington are the ones that are coming out, of course, I think about seven hundred plus people voted early with absentee voting, because I was inside earlier and the vote count on the machine for the one district was about two hundred and twenty, and they'd only seen three, about thirty people about seven-thirty in the morning, so.
All right, and why do you think it's important for people to come out here and vote?
It's our democratic process, and we are all charged with making sure that it works, and the only way that it works is for you to do your research on the candidates, find out who the first, the best person is, and then come and vote, or vote absentee, whatever your choice is.
All right, thank you so much. Good luck.
Would you like to be on camera today, we can ask you a few questions? Wonderful. All right, so what brings you out here today?
I'm, I'm not Megan Emery, but I'm out here to support her, I've known her for many years and know what she does on the city council, so I wanted to come out and spend some time promoting her candidacy.
Wonderful. Is there anything you're passionate about besides, you know, Megan on the ballot, but any other things on the ballot right now that you're passionate about?
Well, I think it's really important to spend the school budget and the city budget, because it's a time where there are a lot of changes that need to be made, and we need the support, and I think the community will come behind them this time, yeah.
Um, and what do you think about, you know, people coming in in person versus mail-in? Did you do a mail-in or did you do in person?
Do a mail-in. I like the, I like the process of coming in here and filling out a ballot and putting it in the, in the machine, that's to me, you know, what I grew up with, and I will so continue to do that. If I had to go away, I'd mail in, but I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather come in and do what I know is casting a vote in this traditional sense.
Thank you so much.
Get all these shots.
We like to get everyone. Yes, wonderful. All right, so what brings you out here today?
Uh, we're supporting, uh, our candidates in the city council race, and as, uh, you know, Tim said, this is where our community gets to express itself and indicate how they're feeling about the issues.
And, uh, did you do mail-in or in-person ballot?
Uh, I went to city hall about a week ago to vote, uh, which was good, too, because there was good energy there, a lot of people taking advantage of the opportunity to get out and, uh, vote early. Uh, I think overall, making the vote more accessible to people is a good thing for democracy. Uh, we don't have great challenges with voter turnout and voter restrictions here in this state, but we know in other parts of the country that it's a big issue, and we're blessed, uh, to have the doors open for us to vote in a lot of ways here.
Are there any articles that you're really passionate about on the ballot today?
It was, uh, there was not a lot that was on the ballot, uh, I am supportive of passing the school budget and our municipal budget. We try to be, uh, fiscally responsible in our community and do what we can to, you know, keep our expenses in check, but that's a great challenge, uh, as we know, so.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great. So, what brings you out today?
Uh, I am out here, uh, showing my support for Linda Bailey, who also happens to be my stepmother. She's a great candidate, and I'm happy to be here supporting her.
Awesome. Are there any issues that you're passionate about today that are on the ballot?
Mostly just the city council race and, and what it means for land use regulations and the future of South Burlington.
And did you vote in person or mail-in?
I have not yet voted, I'll be voting in person over at Chamberlain.
Awesome, wonderful. And anything else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have some handouts for you. I think I'll be, uh, well, I, I hope you consider me, um, even though you are my brother-in-law. How's it going, warmer here? Cast my vote and my, where's your other voter?
TV, no worries, thank you. We're with Town Meeting TV, do you want to answer a few questions for us on camera? No worries, have a good one.
Uh, not right now.
No worries. You want to answer a few questions for us, for the camera? No worries. Camera, thank you, um, so what brings you out here to vote today?
I vote every time there's an election. What's different about today?
Good point, uh, and why do you think it's so important for people to come out here and vote?
Well, this is, this is what we stand for is choices, being able to make decisions together as a group of people. This is how we decide.
And, uh, is there anything on the ballot that you're particularly interested in today?
Well, I do think the whole, whole sort of development of Chittenden County and South Burlington is extremely important. Uh, there are extremely important issues because, like housing, for example. I don't see as anybody could argue saying that nobody needs to have shelter. So the whole issue really becomes, um, what do we think is important? And how should we go about doing it so that we have the least amount of impacts, negative impacts that we possibly can in the area? So we just have to put our trust in certain individuals to represent us on the council and, and, uh, in the town. And that's the way we work.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, um, what brings you out to vote today instead of submitting a mail-in ballot?
We always like to make sure our ballot gets in the right place.
And is there anything on today's ballot that you feel passionate about?
Just the people.
Just want to vote. We're in a country where you can vote and we should keep it up.
Everybody should vote somehow.
Well, thank you so much and enjoy your day.
I'm alright, how are you?
Doing good, we're, uh, Town Meeting TV, Channel 17. Do you want to answer a couple of questions for us about, alright, you got it.
Okay, um, what brings you out to vote today?
Well, the concerns that I have about some major aspects of, uh, life. And so there are people who are willing to uphold things and others who aren't. So I vote for the people who are there to help with greening things up and getting us perhaps to do something about the conditions in the world.
Thank you, is there anything on the ballot that you feel passionate or strong about?
Well, yeah, I'm concerned, uh, about climate change, obviously, I guess most people are. And there are a few other aspects, uh, having to do, uh, with choices that people are making concerning, I'm not sure if it's, what aspects, uh, right now, I'd have to have something in front of me to remember. But anyway, yeah, you come out and you vote for things you believe in, things you want.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
With the option for a mail-in, uh, ballot, have you been seeing a lot of people today?
Uh, well, this is my first time, uh, working the voting booth here, so I don't know what the traffic usually is like. Um, we do have a fair amount of mail-in ballots already. And then we have this, you know, foot traffic, so I don't know how to answer that.
Thank you, and are you feeling rested? Are you taking care of yourself during this long day?
Uh, we're halfway, we started at seven, it's ten o'clock, so yeah, halfway through our six-hour shift. Yep, yep, I think I'll make it.
Thank you so much.
And also, why you're running again for city council?
Well, name's Darryl Desatels, and like I was saying a little earlier, I was on the city council from two thousand to two thousand eight. And after what I've seen going on with the present city council over the last ten years or so, I am very displeased. And a lot of my friends who are seniors are very displeased in the way the city has been taking, you know, raising taxes everywhere they can possibly raise it. And that wasn't the way it was back then. I says, you know, we, we tried to cut taxes. We, you know, we even went so far as every time that the city, the, the different departments would turn in, uh, their budgets, you know, those were, one time we made them all cut their budgets by five percent. You know? And it's getting almost impossible to live in Winuski. I'm a homeowner and living in my home, but you know, I'm on social security now, you know, and it's, every year my taxes go up. And it's getting harder and harder every year, and I know I'm not the only senior in that place. And not only seniors, but there's a lot of people out there concerned. And what I've, what I'm finding the problem is, is that, and to talk with my friends and everything in Winuski, is it appears to be that the, the present city council over the last few, I don't know, ten years or so, eight years, ten years, they're more concerned about their political parties than they are the citizens of Winuski. You know, and I plan on putting an end to that part. If I get elected, you know, I'm only going to be one amongst four, so I'm not sure.
So right, there are seven candidates for two seats for city council.
Well, no, but I'm saying if I make the city council, if I make it, okay, I'm, I'm one of four votes. And, you know, what, if, you know, I'm going to be voting against a lot of stuff that I don't think is beneficial to the city of Winuski. You know, if it's party-related, I'm not going to vote for it.
Alright.
You know, so.
Thank you for, for filling us in on, on what's important to you and good luck today.
Oh, thank you very much.
Alright, take care.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure, which is where they are, um, Winuski residents are voting today on Tuesday, March first, twenty twenty-two. There are a few candidates who are here, candidates who are running for city council. There were seven candidates on the ballot for two seats. And, uh, it is a chilly March morning, but it's relatively clear. Looks like turnout is a little slow, but people are coming in to cast their votes. I saw someone come earlier with a mail-in ballot.
Really?
Yep. What's up?
The camera's cold. Okay, so, I think, oh, I should probably check my phone.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, so, how do I keep moving?
Don't do it, lady. What's up?
Do we want to go somewhere else or are we good here?
Um, where else could you, I mean, we could go.
Ooh, I wanted to get some B-roll.
Yeah. You could actually.
Say no, but I hate to be on camera and I am rushing to work though.
Okay.
No worries.
But I do think voting is really important for everybody. And I love the sticker.
The sticker's the best part.
This time?
What's up?
This time?
Not right now, but it will be later. Is that okay with you?
It's better.
Okay, tell me about, yeah, you want to hold that? And you can, um, tell us why it was important for you to vote today?
Yeah, it's important to me to vote today because I like this city of Winuski. Because of Winuski, is, is it like, it's a small city, but it's not a small city for people. It's a lot of people like to live over there in Winuski. Because of Winuski, it's important to anybody. It's because of Winuski, it's help anybody. It's not see this is white people, this is black, no. It's help anybody. When you have like a problem, you can go to like a, to officer, I don't know that officer's name. For, for officer over there, when you say like a, anybody for over there, because of for that officer for, for refugee or another place, is working black and white, you want to go over there, you can see, this is can help me, this is can help you, no. Whatever you want to help you, we'll help you, whatever you want. That's why I like to vote today, because I like over there in Winuski to be funny, to be better to anybody. Anybody to be happy about this Winuski very much.
Wonderful, how long have you lived in Winuski?
Winuski, just I come over there, America to two thousand nineteen.
Oh, so you've been there.
Yeah, two thousand nineteen, March. But right now, Winuski, I have just three here, but I'm, I'm almost three here. This month nineteen, I'm three here. That's why I like Winuski. Winuski is, is supporting me to go to school. I'm go to school every day over there in Winuski school. That's why I like Winuski, because we follow in a coming. I was done of speaking English, not understand English, but right now, I'm speaking English, I'm understanding anything teachers tell me. When I go anybody, anywhere, anybody is tell me like English something, I will learn about that, I will speak, I will give anybody answer. That's why I like over there in Winuski.
So, thank you so much for talking with us today. I'm so glad that we got an opportunity to, to talk with you and to hear more about you.
Thanks.
Thank you and thank you for voting.
Okay, enjoy the day.
Bye-bye. So voters.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Vote today, yeah.
Um, we just moved to Winuski in September. And we're really excited to, you know, get involved in the town and help out. And, uh, we watched the, uh, the town meeting, uh, forum.
Oh, I was going to ask how you got informed, because there are a lot of decisions that you need to make.
We really appreciate that, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, we're also first-time homeowners in Winuski, like for, first for us, but also like the property tax, you know, approving property taxes is like exciting for the first time. In the past, we've voted on it, but haven't like directly contributed property taxes, so that's exciting. Um, and we want to help the town spend our property taxes on things that can benefit everybody. Um, yeah, and yeah, it's just great to be like, I love the small-town community feel here and getting to like vote in local elections where we know that the votes have a direct impact on what happens locally, so we're psyched. That's terrific, thank you so much for being here and for sharing your, uh, your perspective with us. Yeah, awesome, thank you for covering it. And tune in tonight at seven, we'll be having our live results.
We will be watching.
Starts at seven and goes until all the ballots are counted. Awesome, thank you for covering it.
Thank you so much, take care. Wow, fans. Good morning. Results program tonight, would you care to talk with us quickly?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For me was the school vote, because we have to increase funding for education. And, uh, I like the, the city council, there was a wide variety of choices for city council. It was very good, very good.
And how did you get informed about the issues?
Oh, I watched the debate on your TV. Yeah, it was, that's a good website. I watched the, uh, the city council debate.
That's terrific.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
Thank you so much.
Good website, good website.
Take care. Great.
I'm a new resident and then, um, no, being involved within, you know, any of like city work and then any of the town work is really important. And then I love how this is a very active community. I love how there is a very full ballot of, you know, a broad amount of people to choose from, so I'm, I'm really excited about the outcome. And then to see, you know, the great work that gets done here, yeah.
Terrific, thank you so much. And tune in tonight at seven PM to stay up to date on, on results and see who gets elected to the city council. Awesome, thank you. Have a great day, thank you so much. Are you here? Yes. And just kind of get generally advising and, um, you know, we don't think about it. It's very, it's awesome. Yeah, yeah, I went and they were like very, they were very helpful. And then, what is you at the hospital? No, yeah, I did that.
Yeah, 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 I do, yeah, thanks. Um, I supervise the health department.
Okay, that's cool.
So, yeah, I'll be a master of staff.
But it's for you both anyway. But it was like, cool. For fairness.
On such a cold day.
I'm, I'm here because democracy is important. Look at what's going on in the world. What would Ukrainians give to have the simplicity of traveling half a mile to vote for the leadership in their country, for the propositions? We take it too much for granted.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's, it's really critical, so why would I possibly not vote today?
Wow, thank you for giving us so much to think about.
Absolutely, thank you for your part in all of this too.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
You too.
Try and silver Sarah Mill.
Oh my gosh, Sarah Mill, well, I know you're not camera shy, so now you have to talk. Are you allowed to talk?
Um, good question, I think so.
Of course you are.
As a citizen of Winuski, I think I'm allowed to talk.
I think you are. I don't know, some people say I work for the school board or something.
I do not work in a local municipality, so I think I'm covered, yeah.
Alright, yeah, so tell me, there's a lot on the ballot today, what was important to you?
Um, city council was top of mind. Um, uh, I think that the city council of Winuski has for a long time been dominated by white folks, if I'm honest. And our population here in Winuski does not reflect that. And so I was really excited that we had diversity of candidates, not just based on race, based on opinion, background, um, all of the, uh, all of the brilliance that they all brought. I was really grateful to CCTV for, uh, the candidate, um, forum being recorded so that, because I couldn't be there that night, so that I could, um, watch later on. That was really helpful in me making a decision.
Terrific, and also, um, there were, well, there's a city council candidate who was also running for the school board.
That is true.
Do you have any thoughts about that?
Um, not necessarily, uh, I think our school board, uh, has been doing a pretty excellent job during some really trying times, particularly as the state is trying to do a better job of appropriating funds for, um, populations that need more support, especially around English language learning and things like that, that certainly our school needs. Um, I have been really impressed with Alex Yen on our school board and the work that he's been doing to support that effort. So I do, I do stay, uh, up to date on the school board despite not having kids. I think, I think a lot of folks often think if you don't have children attending schools in the school district, then maybe you're not as engaged in what's happening in our schools. But, um, I'm very excited to see this construction happening down at, at the school and excited to see what that finalized project will look like. And, um, I hadn't realized that there was, um, a, a measure to, uh, enter a lease, uh, at eighty-seven Elm for, um, early head start. That was exciting, it's in my neighborhood. So yeah, excited to support the school's efforts as well.
Great, well, I'm so glad that you took the time to talk with us today.
Yeah, it's good to see you.
And it's great to see you as always.
Yeah, thanks.
And tune in tonight at seven to stay up to date on results.
Oh, I know.
See what happens.
Nail biters.
Nail biters, exactly.
Thanks.
So. Good to see you. How have you been?
Thank you.
We need a little sunshine.
Yes. Yes.
So, um, tell us why it was important for you to come out and vote today?
Um, I think it's really important to share your opinions, um, on public issues. I own a home here, I have kids in school here. I can't complain about what's going on unless I share my opinions about what's going on. Plus, I love voting. It feels like such an important and exciting thing that we get to participate in, so I love taking advantage of it. I think growing up in Vermont, you get instilled with that town meeting day excitement from an early age, and I've never lost it, so I just think it's important.
That's so great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course. Bye. Bye.
We're with Town Meeting TV.
That's fine.
Uh, if you could just move over to the side, because you don't want to block anybody from going in.
Yes.
Same thing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Make sure you get my good son. Get the only house.
I was just excited.
Yeah, exactly.
I shouldn't turn around.
It's too cold to have a comeback. I'm so proud of it. He got it in there. I was thinking it, but I couldn't get down to my frozen ton. It's colder out there than I thought. It's nice to be in here in the heat.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would it be possible to see the all resident voting forms? I heard there was, yeah. Do you want to see that, Emily?
Yeah. Good morning. Do you have any registration, take your caller?
Good morning, Jessie.
Five minutes.
That's Jessie Baker.
Oh.
The town.
Former, yeah. Um, so yeah, so this is the special forum, and these are just for regular voter registration.
Regular voter registration, yes.
That's so cool. Do you have a sense, do you think the turnout today is going to be kind of slow, or hard to know?
We have no idea.
Yeah, it's, um, it's too early.
However, we do like to try to guess.
You do. Do you have the money on it or anything?
Of course. Whole dollar. And out of 30 years, I've only won once. And I didn't even get my money. I, I was too tired. I just wanted to go home. I was too tired. I wanted to go home.
I now have 41.
Forty-one?
Mm-hmm. All residents.
Does we have, uh, you said 200 absentee? That we received or were issued?
That were issued.
Okay.
And I did notice someone coming back there, mail-in ballot, dropped off.
Don't worry, we don't get ya. You need your beauty rest first.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, absolutely. Have a great day, sir.
I think I'm done at like 7:30 or something. Who's doing like the interview hosting stuff? Actually, Emily, well, so the Adrian or Diane and Mark Thompson? Actually, so Mark actually filmed my blood video.
How many, um, town you make the round pass? Uh, we're just going here and, uh, about we've got teams that are at various wards in Burlington, South Burlington.
I don't know that we're sending anybody to Williston today, because there isn't.
I was curious if more people were doing the absentee stuff, this evening, like, uh, Amanda or whatever.
It's about what it was last year.
Yeah.
So on the new city Thursday, this year, we're about 2:30 than last year.